I've called this meeting to order. Is there any public input? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of December 21st? In your second.
Sir.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I hear approval of the board and budget committee meeting on December 17th?
Second?
Sure, thanks. You weren't there, but that's okay.
December 17th?
Yeah.
I didn't go to the 28th, but I went to the 17th.
Okay.
No, I got.
All right. Any errors or omissions or any further discussion on the 17th? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Manifested going around, 2016 warrant. Do we want to discuss that?
We sent out a draft of the warrant this afternoon. And, I don't know. We have blanks within the warrant for the figures to go in. But we sent it out to ask for any feedback, any corrections. We did share it with the board's attorney. We did make some minor revisions which are reflected in the draft that you got today.
Other than that, I don't think there's anything else we can do. We have to approve it later, I think.
I did have one question on it. Article one, the school board members. There's two members, each for three years. One of those positions is mine, and mine's only a two year.
No, you've been up for two.
It goes to three? That's all I wanted to double check. Okay, I thought it was for another two.
It's a lifetime commitment.
Nice job.
And you just got it during the conference.
Yeah, I know. Okay. That's nice, okay. All right, then I'm good.
Unfinished business, superintendent search.
Yes, the superintendent search is going well. As I reported the last time, there hasn't been anything new since then. We'll have another meeting this coming Thursday. And we're getting close. We still have some applications coming in. So we aren't finished, but we're getting there.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a deadline that you stop receiving applications?
January 8th.
8th?
Yeah. But the search will remain open until it's filled.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, new business. LHS, Daisy Bronson, core values. The ladies are on.
Hey. Who will introduce ourselves? I'm Jen Carbonneau, the instructional coach, member of the leadership team and the subcommittee that's focusing on this work.
I'm Emily Platt, and so I'm here wearing two hats as the advisor for LHS Student Council, but also a member of the LHS DBMS Leadership Team and a member of the Subcommittee on Visioning and Core Values.
Sorry, do you have?
I'm Janine Monroe.
I'm Madison Anderson.
Vanessa Sandville, advisor for National Honor Society and likewise member of the Leadership Team and Subcommittee on Core Values. So the presentation tonight is on the core values process that we have started as a subcommittee. And we would like to include you in the work that we've done so far and then our plan for continuing the work as well. To frame our discussion, bringing to the NEAS Core Values, which is the first standard of accreditation. And as an accredited school, we'll be undergoing our next accreditation cycle in the calendar year of 2018. And this is from the NEAS Standard 1. It's the overview for it, which is the core value standard. I know it's quite small, so I'll read it to you. It says, "Effective schools identify core values and beliefs about learning that function as explicit foundational commitments to students and the community. Decision-making remains focused on and aligned with these critical commitments. Core values and beliefs manifest themselves in research-based, school-wide, 21st-century learning expectations. Every component of the school is driven by the core values and beliefs about learning and supports all students' achievement of the school's learning expectations." That's NEAS's view on what core values are. So we went through this process of identifying core values, and we're still undergoing this process to begin this school year. Jennifer Carbonneau, as the coach, underwent this process with any faculty members who were able to be there during our block meetings. And we had several members of our faculty attend and went through a process that you will see very shortly to identify core values that we hold as members of the school community. The next step in this was following our Veterans Day ceremony. We had contact with many veterans that were able to participate during the ceremony. And following this, we sent out thank you notes to our veterans that attended and who signed in. Included in the thank you notes to them were a core values questionnaire, which you will see shortly. And it asked them to respond on what they believed to be characteristic skills and abilities that graduates of Littleton High School should possess. And we received to date 16 responses from those veterans that were willing to put their thoughts down on paper and send them back to us. We would like to share just one of those with you right now.
LHS students should be culturally astute and responsible global citizens. They should understand what it means to be American. How do Americans and our way of life impact other countries, people, and environments? How can each, as individuals, impact our larger society in New Hampshire, the U.S. and globally? They should be respectful of others' culture, ethnicity, and point of view.
So that was one of our veterans who responded. The next, so following up with this, core values, particularly for the military, wanted to give you some examples. The military is a great place to start with our veterans for looking at core values because these men and women who have served our country have core values that they hold in common for all of the branches of the military. So here are some examples from the Army and Army Reserve of core values of their service branch. Also from the Air Force, the Coast Guard, and you can see the similar threads, and also through the Navy and Marine Corps. Similar ones of courage, honor, commitment, respect, responsibility, selfless service, et cetera. The next step was at the Senior Center Thanksgiving Dinner, Littleton High School. The National Honor Society serves Thanksgiving and Christmas dinner there. And during our first one at Thanksgiving, we did the same thing. After we provided them with dinner and spent some time with the community members there, we invited them to participate in this survey. And we had 22 who responded from the dinner that we served them there. And they presented similar narratives, and I would like to share one with you as well.
Essentially, a person of integrity with a value system grounded in respect for others and a sense of the common good to cultivate a sense of community service and personal responsibility. I think openness and flexibility are key as well. It is important to have a world vision and not be myopic, as we truly have a global village. And this member graduated from LHS, and he feels that education, an example provided by faculty, was very well.
Served him well.
Served him well.
And how long ago did he graduate?
50 years ago.
So the following step was to train our leaders. Members of Student Council and National Honor Society underwent a student leadership core values training. They went through the process to define core values as they saw it, but also so that they in turn could then present this to the rest of our student body and lead them through the process of defining their core values. The first step was to train them. And Student Council, National Honor Society, all have core values. They each have four. In Student Council, they consider them cornerstones, and National Honor Society, we consider them pillars. But the students understand the value of core values, if you will, and also the place that it has in decision-making within their own organization. So for Student Council, the four cornerstones are leadership, service, voice, and engagement. And for the National Honor Society, scholarship, leadership, service, and character. So it framed their view going into this. And during that training, we had 31 student leaders participate. This activity was facilitated by Caitlin Joubert, one of our middle school guidance counselors, Emily, and myself. And this activity, which was done with the faculty back in October, and that was repeated with the student leadership and then was brought to the students, was based on the work of Dr. Bill Bryant, who is the vice president of the Leadership Organization, Center for Secondary School Redesign. So it's his protocol that we worked through with the students. This is the protocol. The students are going to share this with you.
So this is what we did with, we did ourselves and everybody else did. So we asked them what our core values and what is visioning.
These words and statements say, "This is who we are, this is what we do, this is how we do what we do, and this is why we do it." That's what we asked them after. So the first step was individual brainstorm. So in your own opinion, what are the skills, abilities, and characteristics that you and your classmates or all graduates of Littleton High School should have? And list as many as you can think of on the white index card.
So after they made a list on the white NEAS card, they got into smaller groups, and then they collaborated and made, put all those down on purple card.
So next, we formed a group and joined with another group of three and shared all their ideas on the purple index cards. And then they put the similar words together in a category or theme on their next index card.
And then step four, the final step, was to share out. They selected one person from their group to report from their pink index card and shared what they had.
Does anybody have any questions?
So they're going to share with you the results, but we had three different groups at the end when we worked through this with our 31 members of the student leadership. And so they're going to share with you the final results of each of those three groups. And something that I'd like to point out before we show you the three groups is that they didn't chat with one another in between. So Group 1 didn't talk with Group 2 and Group 3. And I hope you see the similarities, that even though we went from individual to smaller group to larger group, there really is common threads that the students believe to be the core values.
Another piece that's really important is that no one's opinions or ideas were excluded, that the combining of lists, we're looking at things where ideas were repeated, but every student's voice was heard and no input was just eliminated from the list.
So for Group 1, their categories were skills and respect. So under skills, they had soft skills, life skills, computer skills, social skills, taxes, and responsibilities. Under respect, they had leadership, social skills, citizenship, appreciation, independence, and courage. And for Group 2, they had four categories. And the first one was independence. And under independence was liability, role model, involved, and motivated. In the second column, it was communication. Under that was kind-hearted, open-minded, and cooperation. And the third was competency. Under that was responsibility, respect, observant. And then the fourth was critical thinking, and under that was problem solving and decision-making.
In Group 3, they had four categories. Under compassion, they had respect, determined, kindness, optimism, open-minded. Under individuality, they had independence, goal-setting, creativity, perseverance, plan for your future, strive to do better. Under critical thinking, they had problem solving, scholarship, team player, people skills. Under communication, they had social skills, leadership, professionalism, and awareness.
This is a summary of the activities that these students and other student leaders conducted in the school during the month of December. They conducted two workshops for each of the grade levels listed there, with the exception of the 8th grade, and they did three workshops for that grade level. And this covered, this was in a span of about two weeks that they did the 11 workshops during advisory time, and students volunteered. And I think, Bro, you probably participated in the most. But, and you can see that the number of students participating is pretty high, considering the number of students in each grade level. So we had 42 students in the 12th grade class, 35 in the junior class, and that is our smallest grade level. 48 in the sophomore class, 41 in the freshman class, 44 in 8th grade. And those are the ones that we've completed to date. And in the next slide, you'll see that our plan is during January, we'll schedule workshops for 7th grade and at Littleton Academy as well.
Can I ask what the workshops are like?
The workshops are the slides and the steps that the students just shared with you.
Oh, you do that with the different grade groups? Oh, that's wonderful.
It's absolutely wonderful. And there are adults in the room, either Vanessa, Caitlin, or myself, to support them, but it's the students that are leading the workshop with their peers. So, good question, thank you. So the next thing that I'd like to talk with you about is our plan to include all community members. And so we're looking at the idea that the school community is much larger than those of us who are actually here in the building every day. And so this is the first indicator under the core value standard for NEAS. And again, I'll read this since it's small. "The school community engages in a dynamic, collaborative, and inclusive process informed by current research-based best practices to identify and commit to its core values and beliefs about learning." And so, with that, in December, there were other groups that shared in the core values survey. They were distributed to the community business and industry advisory groups through the Career and Technical Center, and also shared with parents and community members during that holiday concert here at Littleton High School and Daisy Bronson Middle School. And didn't want to interfere with the concert, but we did that in the NHS Benefit Dinner in the cafeteria. Coming up in January and February, we have a pledge that we're going to distribute. This is the same one that the veterans received and the senior citizens. And we have copies of it for you tonight. So the students are going to distribute it to you now. And you'll notice it's a really open-ended forum. And it's really, it's really up to the individual to respond in the way that they feel most comfortable, whether it's a narrative or a bulleted list. And we will, the Subcommittee will have the work of going through these, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. But just looking for input on the skills, abilities, and characteristics that graduates of LHS should have. So besides the school warrant, we'd like to share it also with SAU 84 employees. And Dr. Bifford, we'd be open to bringing our group over and doing it as an interactive presentation.
Well, that'd be great.
But that's, we can talk about that. The other thing that we'd like to do is have this survey available to anyone on the school's website. And we have it, obviously electronically, as a PDF, but we also have a Google survey. So one of the things we would like to ask tonight is your permission to move ahead with that. Other things that we'd like to do, having the electronic version, is share it with the Alumni Association. And those of us who've been class advisors and maintained contact either through Facebook groups, would use social media to share the survey with them. We also planned to share it with Crusader Pride, the Little Leopards preschool parents, community preschool providers and parents with those groups, as well as churches and social services in the area. Caitlin Joubert, her role as a guidance counselor, is going to be the one to contact Plymouth State University, Linden State, Grandin State College, the White Mountains Community College, and New Hampshire Technical College to get their input, since many of our students attend those schools and they're part of the larger North Country region. Now, the activity, and this is our roadshow, is we're hoping to provide opportunities for the students. This might be a surprise to them. But we've told them that the groups with their peers were probably the most challenging to date, that groups that are made up of adults and community members are going to be the easy groups. And I think you did really well with all the student groups, and the kids did great. So we'd like to do the activity with the support staff here at the high school and the middle school. We'd like to do the activity with Lakeway School faculty and staff, as well as Friends of Lakeway and Crusader Pride. So this is an extensive list of organizations within the community. And if any of you are affiliated with these organizations or would suggest someone for us to contact, we would love to do the visioning activity in person, but if it's more appropriate to do a paper questionnaire or an electronic one, we'd be open to that too. So considering the Chamber of Commerce, Littleton Rotary Club, the Alps, VFW Masons, industrial park businesses, and some of them may have contributed their thoughts as the part members of the advisory group. Littleton Regional Hospital, the Police Department, Fire Department, and the town offices and officials, including the selectmen. So this is the committee that's been working on core values. As we mentioned at the beginning, it's a Subcommittee of the LHS DBMS Leadership Team. And the members are Al Smith, David G. M. Paulo, Jen Carbonneau, Caitlin Joubert, myself, and Vanessa Sandville. And we have a timeline, and it's a pretty ambitious timeline. And what we've shared with you so far was what we planned, and we've met our goals to date. In February, we are going to continue with the compilation and desegregation of the core values visioning data. And what that means is, we're going through all the feedback that we've gotten from students, parents, the veterans, and we're looking for similarities. And grouping them according to core values, beliefs about learning, and another term for that are guiding principles. Some of us on the leadership team worked with Bill Bryant a couple of years ago, and guiding principles was a term that he used, but it's very similar. It's the things that you hold dear and then influences your decision-making. And also 21st century learning expectations. In March, we're going to be holding a curriculum fair with student presentations, and that will be available for parents and community members. And that's an opportunity to share the work that we've done up until that point and include other parents who may not have had an opportunity yet to share their thoughts and ideas. Also in March, we are going to share what the committee has put together after going through all the work in terms of core values, beliefs about learning. And our hope is to share that at a faculty meeting and get feedback. So not present it as this is what's been decided upon, but what do you think? What feels right? What should we maybe reconsider? And then we'd like to do some work on the 21st century learning expectations during an upcoming Professional Development Day, also in March. We'd like to hold a community forum. And one of the things that you'll note on the questionnaire is we're asking if people are interested in participating. And quite a number of the veterans and seniors and parents that we've heard from have given us that contact information. And so they'll be the group that we pull together to have a discussion about core values, beliefs. And I'm actually thinking, this one's probably going to be open to anyone. There's a later one that would be a more focused group. And our hope is to return later in March to the board and give a similar presentation on the work between now and that time. And the focus would be on core values, beliefs, and learning expectations. In April and May, and this would be the focus committee of people who volunteer, we'd actually be looking at the core values and beliefs about learning and crafting a mission and vision statement for our school. And the important part is that we'd have representation from all school community, state holder groups, including students. And actually, Jen, scooch back one. And we'd like to, again, at the end of May, come back and visit the board again and share that work on the mission and vision statements and get your input at that time.
Ideally.
And ideally approve it, but ideally applaud. This is wonderful. And then in June, we would share it back again with the faculty and staff and look for commitment from them to honor those core values, beliefs about learning, and 21st century learning expectations. And we would also roll it out to the students and thank them and applaud them for their work in the entire process. And that concludes our presentation. If you have any comments or questions, we'll answer them.
Well, I am really impressed. I'm really impressed with the thoroughness of the process. I think it's, I think it's really wonderful and very methodical, and that you're going to get some good information, and it will be important, I think, to the whole district. I do have a question, if it's okay. I'd love to know what the students thought. What did, how did you find the reaction of the student workshops that you went, that you conducted in the various grades? Was, is there anything that struck you as particularly interesting or noteworthy about how the students who participated reacted to the whole process?
A lot of them had like the same kind of thoughts about the core values. And like all of them came together, similarities, and they had a lot of, like similar.
Some of the adults that were in the room when we were conducting the workshops thought that we had talked with them ahead of time. We didn't. We didn't give them any examples at all. You saw the ones from the branches of the military. They didn't get anything like that. And we talked about what core values are. We tried to give examples that were about visioning that would be relevant to their lives, like learning to drive, and that you might have to have certain skills, abilities, and characteristics. They don't just give you a driver's license when you turn 16. So the kids didn't have examples that they then gave back to us. So it was really genuine, and what Madison said about the similarities, it was really striking. It was really striking.
So they knew what you were talking about? I mean, they got what it was that you wanted them to come back to you with, and interesting.
I think that was the most beneficial part of having small groups like that with several student leaders, was that we walked around and could help them put into words sometimes what they would describe as a situation. And they couldn't sometimes articulate that one or two. And they couldn't sometimes articulate that one or two words that they needed, and that's where we would step in and help. But they actually had some really thoughtful ideas that, sometimes as adults, we think that we have to give them more of the answers and lead them in that direction. They had amazing thoughts, just very naturally, that they came up with by themselves. And then also in groups, they did some great collaboration between them as well.
I just want to say thank you all, students and staff, who are doing this, because I know it's on top of your other duties and, which are already hugely significant, so I really appreciate it.
Yeah, it's not easy what you're doing.
No, what's exciting is that when, when our core values are defined, the decisions we make as a school will be reflecting them. So you've got something to go back to for decision-making purposes.
And accountability.
It's pretty exciting. It's gotta be the, it's gotta be the thorough.
I would also add kudos to all the students, because I would agree. Other students is probably the most difficult group, and you're often approaching upperclassmen. And that may be intimidating, but I've been to a few sessions. You guys did an excellent job, and the responses were from students were, it's been sad, but very mature and spot-on.
Great.
Doing this job. And this is, obviously, work that should be done anyways, but it's right in line with the NEASC work.
That's right.
Number-one standard used to be mission. Now it's all built around core values and developing a mission. So it falls right in line with that work. The thoughtfulness, your point, is key, because when the visiting team, the visiting team does come here and they look for the process, they wonder what the process is. And this is very well thought out.
The other thing that's interesting, when, when you look at the NEASC standards, the other NEASC standards, the first indicator is based on core values and beliefs about learning. So, so this is, this is the right first step.
Right. Well, I'll be interested, very interested to see what you all think at the end of this process, what you feel you've gained from just participating in the process.
Just standing up in front of us was, you know, a roadie. It's hard, I know. It's, it's difficult to do that. So good job.
Well, thank you very much for having us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'd be glad to see you come back.
We'll, we'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agendas and negotiations, we're going to have a non-public superintendent's report.
I have two questions connected with our budget hearing next week, and that is dealing with the physical arrangements in the room. And we have done PowerPoint presentations, and I have a handout for you of last year's. And I think that different board members took different portions. And we can prepare, we can prepare slides. I think that, from my standpoint, as my first experience, I think having the visuals, walking through them, gave members of the audience focal points. And then you explained and expanded upon those, those points as you went through them. I mean, I know that the business manager did the, spoke about the revenue. Ann and Jim discussed the articles that were being presented.
So what did Jim do last year? Did you do this?
Jim did an introduction.
Yep.
And then turned it over to the superintendent to begin the presentation. Talked about how we arrived at the budget. The business manager walked us through the operating budget. The, we discussed the foundation for the budget, which was the board's commitment to providing a broad spectrum of educational experiences. We did talk about how we arrived at the budget, and we have been through several iterations this year as well. The budget overview explained where the cost drivers appeared in the budget. And then we did a summary of the larger increases. Showed where the various expenses occur, the largest part, of course, being personnel. Did an explanation of the enrollment, enrollment projections. Really addressed some of the questions that we experienced from the, from the budget committee, some of their more, more salient points. Tom explained the default budget. And then went through the, the components of the collective bargaining agreement, and of course, all of that depends upon the outcome of negotiations. And we explained the board articles. And took questions, and really took questions all along the way. So if you would like to prepare, us to prepare something along this order, I know that we had discussed, I had discussed with Ann and Barbara, the possibility of doing a work session next Monday night, the 11th, to, we could have these materials ready for the board to look at.
Is everybody agreeable to have a work session on Monday?
That's fine. Me.
What, any more time? Starting at what time?
My time can be longer.
Should be able to do it.
Five?
Starting at five.
Pardon me?
Starting at five.
Five, here?
Why don't we do it over at the SAU office?
At the SAU office. Okay?
Okay.
See this? Okay, January 11th. Okay. Anything else? Any other questions from board members? This point? Right, one second. Thank you. And do you have any comments, you two?
Oh, well, I can't, I'm sorry.
Any comments?
On anything?
Yeah.
I mean, I have some ideas, but they might better be addressed at the workshop. But, you know, I, I just, my, one of my principal aims is that it be sort of informational, communicative, and, and that we not just show slides and read what's on the slides, but rather show the information on the slide, but then talk about what that information means for us as a district and, and the community at large, and sort of where, where it's for, what the context is for that. And we know that there are a couple of concerns, that our budget this year is going to be a bigger increase than it was last year. And so I, we should be prepared to address that and talk about what those factors are, and perhaps even how the, the large returns that we've been giving, that, that we have ended up with, and that go back to the taxpayers at the end of the year, how that factors into what we need to ask for in the following year. And sort of really address these questions that we know people have on their minds. But, and, and I'd be happy to sort of give my input on how that could be done in, at the various stages.
If we meet on the 11th, and the 12th is the hearing? So I think, David, are you proposing that we'll kind of have a draft of the presentation?
I will have a draft out. You know, we'll start working on this tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
And we'll get the draft out just as, because the information, it's the format that I'm looking at here.
Yeah.
If there's additional that you want.
Yeah.
Let us know. But we will follow this format. You look at it, you feed back to us suggestions for edits, and you'll get a chance to, to see those, and then we can do the final run-through on, on Monday.
So I would like to, to your consideration, you know how Rick does that overview of the whole of Lakeway, kind of broken down, kind of disaggregated to some extent about who's attending? Could we get that for the district? Sort of, and include our, just a one-minute summary about our population?
Yes.
Unless you guys don't think that...
Student, meaning student population?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. This is who we are.
Yeah.
You know, this is, these are the people that, you know, are being educated.
Like the number of students, and you want to free and reduce things in your number of faculty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things. I think the feedback I got on the street, it was well, about the budget hearings, the budget meeting, committee meeting, was that, like you say, a lot of people don't understand what goes in from the bottom up into our budget. It's more than having us read these squares off to them. And I agree with you totally that it needs to be done, that's the word I want, but I can't come up with it, at, at the level for us to, to get it across, this, you know, we do a lot.
And if there's any photo, graphic visual aids that could sort of, whether they be or, or pictures of wet spots on roofs, or the scan that we have, and I know we've now, and, and those types of supporting pieces about maintenance projects or technology initiatives, picture of the sixth grade with their new laptops in action now, you know, that's one of our big initiatives, and it's going to be moving forward. Just to sort of put a picture with the words, adds a little variety, something different to look at for folks.
Actually, getting to that, I mentioned this at one other meeting, I don't remember which, but there are a couple, two issues that have come up, two big concerns. One is, what are we going to do about Lakeway? And the other is, how big are facilities, how, how, how big are facilities' needs are at this point? What's been discovered over a course of the year, and that it's been investigated? And we know that that's going to be expensive in the, in the coming year, and I think that we should highlight those two things. I mean, the, the Lakeway maybe just should be mentioned, because it's on our mind, and we want people to start thinking about it, too. And we might just want to talk about it for, for five minutes at, at the hearing, and that it's something that, you know, the community, we have to start talking about as a community. And in terms of facilities, we, we might also do a few minutes on that, so that people have a sense of what the needs are. And, you know, that we haven't been addressing it as well as we could, because we've been, you know, trying to save money, but that, that's short-sighted, and we have to spend the money on maintain, maintaining the plant. So I would like to sort of focus on two or three things. For example, what are our goals? What are our educational goals and other goals for the coming year that we expect this new budget to begin to address? And that sort of puts a frame around the whole presentation, so people can relate what they're seeing to what, you know, to the larger picture. So that we're not trying to explain the budget itself, you know, because I don't, I don't think that's helpful to people, explaining the different categories and what the numbers are, and so forth. But rather, what the picture is of what we see, what we want to do in the coming year, and this is how we plan to get there, and this is what it's going to cost in the coming year.
Yeah. And, and as well as touching upon a little bit of the metabolts, like the increase in health insurance costs.
Oh, absolutely.
I think, you know, that's a big driver.
Explaining what the increases are is very important, so.
Yeah. Well, I think that sounds good.
Okay, let's see if we can get on it. All right. Anything else? If not, I'd like to have a motion to go into non-public, please.
I have a motion to enter into non-public session under paragraph...